Lisa, how are we doing?
Six thirty.
Welcome everyone to the town of Annapolis. Today is August the twenty eighth. The time is six thirty. It's time to begin our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. My nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, although the six of us are here, we do have one additional member of our board. She is zooming in, Aaron Reynolds is going to be zooming in. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minute of July twenty fourth.
Motion by Richard and second by Anne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved as is. Next item on our agenda is an application by CNY Land Trust. This is scheduled this evening for a public hearing. This is regarding site plan amendment for property located at seventy-two thirteen Woodchuck Hill Road. This is tax map number one oh one dash zero one dash zero one. Madam Secretary, did we properly publish the notice of hearing? Are there any requests for reading of the?
I'll make the motion to waive the reading.
I'll sign that.
Second by Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The reading is hereby waived.
We can see. No? Yeah, okay.
We will proceed forward with secret before we open hearing.
Alright, so we're gonna add answer. These questions. Okay, so here's the questions. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
So there's a change in the use, it's just a small. Right now it's not, it's not being used, right?
A minute.
It's gonna be. Yes, right.
Yep.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action get an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit by car walkway?
No. No, or whether.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and address incorporated recently to the available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?
No.
Will the proposed action result in increased potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No. All of those questions being answered, small or no impact, the chair can entertain a motion for a negative secret declaration.
And I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for a negative secret declaration.
Motion by Valerie, second by Arnie, for a negative declaration. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I do enter, I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Make a motion to open a hearing.
Motion by Judy, second by Anne. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is hereby open for anyone who wishes to make a comment regarding Woodchuck Hill Road. The CNY Land Trust.
Hearing on.
Is there anybody online?
Nobody online.
Nobody online. Motion to both. She did you. Oh, I was actually there.
Motion made by Anne, second by Richard to close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
I would be remiss if I did not indicate that we have received the petition from twenty-one members of our community. Indicating that they are totally in favor of what is going on on this property and that they respectfully ask that this be expedited and approved. We've also heard back in county, any county has had no objection to what's been intended there.
I'm not even watching till approved. Yes.
Motion by Anne to approve the site plan amendment. Second. Second by Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. CNY Land Trust, if you're here, you are approved.
Thank you. Thank you all.
The next item on our agenda is an application by Woodland Hills Subdivision, often known as the Hoag Lane Development. This is their fifth presentation before this board. This is a sixteen lot subdivision located at fifty-two eighty Hoag Lane. It's online one tax map number one oh four dash one dash thirty-nine point two. Stu Danner, how are you? Good, how are you?
Very well, thank you. Good night, everyone. So, before, we were for this board previously and where we left it, I mean, we can go, I can go through the whole chronological order, but we needed to submit plans to the town, more detailed plans about where this project was going, this town or this board wanted some more detail. And I, I think we provided that and I'm sure there's some discussion that needs to be made between our engineer and Doug, the town engineer, to try to get that going forward. But.
Let me tell you, let me tell you where we are at.
Wow.
We, we have reviewed your plans, we've reviewed what's been going on and the progress that's occurring. And candidly, we are pleased with the reduction that you've done relative to the number of lots that are to be developed. We are pleased with regard to the amount of earth movement that's going to be done. It's a significant drop in the amount of earth movement that you're gonna do. We're also pleased with the size of the pond. It's smaller than it had previously been. Everything seems to be on the right direction. We did receive your additional plans. And if I have one criticism, you've given us too much. I have never seen so many notes on, on the subdivision. There's notes on absolutely everything and, and there's really notes that are not necessary and needed to some degree. So that would be my most critical statement.
And to that point, I think we were just conscious of where this project was and how we wanted to get to a better place, which I think we are. And we were cautious. So we wanted to know as much as possible for this board.
Well, to a degree, better.
Better to do that than to reverse.
Or the out. Yes, and, and I concur with you on that. I have, that our town has reviewed, Mr. Miller has reviewed what has come in. He has various comments on it and it would seem to me that a work session would be very appropriate. I'm somewhat cautious on this because we had previously done with this project, a number of work sessions privately. And they were, they turned out not to be as fruitful as I would have wanted. So I am suggesting that we do a work session with the full board.
I don't think that. We have.
And if engineering wants to get together and discuss some of those issues and see if they can work out an understanding regarding some of the issues before it comes to the board, I would suggest that you do that. But I think the whole board needs to be involved and participating in this work session.
I do have a couple of overarching comments. There was an internal meeting with Doug and the, the highway superintendent and, and just a few things that I think are going to be helpful. On, on the issue of the notes. There's that, that one page that has, is nothing but notes that are about gay big. We were thinking the ones that aren't relevant, because there are, if someone could read through those, they're just not relevant, and maybe put them in a, in a separate booklet. So they're legible and we can read them to the extent that they're relevant. Otherwise, don't, don't worry about it. There is not a single document that's labeled that, that's a final subdivision map. So there's all the extra things that are going to help us get to the subdivision map, but a document that is a full set subdivision map that only has on it what we need for.
From the, from the surveyor, the surveyor only. The set that we have is the construction documentation set.
Right.
And then there's, it should have been submitted, it's not at all.
I, I, I mean.
We will have a standalone draw from this, from the surveyor.
For what will eventually be filed with the county.
Yes.
Right, which is what actually is going to be approved and the, and the rest of it is just the background of how you, how you get to that approval.
Back and forth with him several times, maybe somebody's making, but we will, we'll get that is.
But if you have that, we're gonna, we're gonna pick a, a date for this meeting. So the other couple of, I, I think the swift still needs to be reviewed. They, there are going to be draft easements. First, I don't know if you have, have you had a chance? To look at, you know, the, the easements, there are easements across to the various properties. We need to see them written.
Okay. I can take care of that.
And. Um.
I think, okay, I interrupt real quick, that might be something to be tied with, tied with the documents on the surveyor. Surveyor's gonna put the easy hits on the plans. We'll have an error to take those.
Jamie, you're talking about the drainage. Some of those things have quite changed. It's not a highway supplement, it's simple.
Okay.
I wouldn't have Chris go too far with those.
Okay, well, anyway, it's.
Definitely, we understand that. It's on my radar. I have to deal with it.
Another thing that's.
Jamie, are you talking about the drainage easements that are on the lots?
Yes.
Okay. Those easements not only have to be to the HOA so they can maintain it, they have to be to the town in case the HOA does not maintain.
Usually I have a provision in there that allows the town to step in in the direct.
Okay, alright, that's.
Okay. Um, you know, if you have a chance to show us those HOA documents, that would, you know, that might be a maybe not right away, but that's, that's something that's on the list. I know there aren't any monuments on there. Again, once you talk to the surveyor about putting out what needs to be done, I think a lot of these will take care of themselves. There's a, I'm not making these up, by the way, I have my own. But the, um, there's a, there's a buffer area. We're not quite sure what that means. So maybe some explanation of that. It's on L dash one oh one. And that may be something else that's going to run into the, you know, HOA and, you know, how do we get people not to do it? We talked about also when you're doing that map, a lot of these things like the buffer area, the easements and the, and the restrictions. We want them on each lot so that when a surveyor goes like, oh, lot free, someone goes to buy it, that essentially on there as to what that means, what does that buffer area mean? Just on each lot. Yeah. I'd like to see the army guard engineer go over there. Well, we're still, we're, we're still waiting for that.
Still do like that.
We're expecting that soon.
Very soon. The army guard?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, the time period to run.
The other thing that was talked about in the small group and I, just food for thought, and I don't know how the board's gonna feel once they look at it, but I think that the highway superintendent is not interested in phasing of the main infrastructure. So that the roads and the drainage is gonna go, it's gonna go in better along phase one.
That's the design intent. The, the phases on the drawing are, we've broken down the construction phase, but it's all gonna happen.
Okay.
It's, those are what's on the plans, snapshots in time. Once the contractor, contractor breaks ground, it'll be finished.
So that was on.
The road is one.
Clear. But, okay, that's.
We can.
That was, that's good to know.
We were just.
That's what we had talked about, so.
Yeah, we, we had just broken it down in phases because of earlier concerns and not disturb too much ground at a time. So each phase constitutes a point of stabilization for the next phase is what gone to. That's something we wanted to talk to Doug and your highway superintendent as we grew up construction. That was the intent. It's an earlier, because if you, if you ripped open the whole site, Doug, then you'd be into a whole nother animal. So we broke it down into phases and we have the contractor stabilizing each phase. So it's not all much. So if you, if you actually, they want to bulldoze the whole site, you have a lot more runoff. What we're proposing, each phase is, you rip an area, you stabilize it before you move on to the next phase. So it's, it's to town's benefit. It's actually what the DC wants to see is the phases are parts within the project, but there's no interruption in, in the construction. We just that was like, it's a receding part of your lawn. If you bought a new property, we'd be doing the problem for you for that lot. They want to stabilize the problem for that lot.
Um, one other, one other glaring thing that was talked about with the with the highway superintendent, and I think it's come up before, or that he does not want any of the drainage going into the roads, which he, what he's reading, it seems to be happening. Well, I don't know what the number of lots that are over here and the, and the lots through the middle.
We have, I think, I guess somebody could work out in a, in our work session.
Right.
There's some areas where it waters coming across multiple lots and you could either overlay and flow it to the road or you can pave it. Or you could have a go to a structure, I think, that'd be easier to work out in the meeting.
I think.
You want to work out in the meeting.
Yeah.
He, he was pretty adamant, he did not want to take water off of those properties. So it was personal lots they found in. Just for example, like Jamie would say, when wells are coming right through the road, he, he was adamant, he wants small channel in the other way.
Oh, I got you. The first, when you come in the road, the first two.
And then once it started to get into it, he found a bunch of.
He, he thought he saw some others where it looked like he.
Yeah, there's two.
So I think. Where I had to, Danny, inside our country zone. You know, he thought it would be everybody's advantage to have, to have you and the whole board in the work sessions on. We didn't care anything else.
It was my understanding, would we have the opportunity to meet with you before that meeting?
I'd rather do it all.
Okay, that's, that's no problem.
Yeah, this is what, just sort of, this is kind of the overview of.
Yeah, no problem.
Of some, I mean, this isn't, I mean, all means everything, but you know, we're gonna get in the nitty gritty, obviously, of the work session and try to move this forward. And the stores, the stores need to be reviewed by the county, I guess. That still has to be done. Am I right about that?
Um, the sanitary, by what? Yeah, that's correct, yes.
So, you know, whatever progress you can make on that would be great. So that's, that's what I have the notes, dropping at meetings, Doug, missing anything, sleeping or?
Anyone else on board?
The only other thing I can think of is in the common areas, the HOA land, the basins, we need easements on those also, not just on the lots, but also on the HOA land. If it's not maintained properly, that we can go on and maintain it, charge back.
Just for the benefit of the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be in the.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good point.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Stu Danner, anything else?
Just really timing because it's critical from our end to really, and I don't want to pressure this board. Appreciate all the oversight you guys done. Um, timing has become.
Madam Secretary, we can put it on our next meeting.
I'm ready.
It's September eleven.
So we'll actually do a work session at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, and candidly, I prefer to hold that until the end of the session. So that will be the last item on the agenda. Because we really want to get into it. Okay.
Would it be possible to, are there other comments? Are there any more comments that you could have beforehand so we could be totally ready and move the review along or should I go with just the comments you gave me? I'll, I'll be prepared.
Yeah, to some degree, we're relying on our engineering for the comments. So I hope you've taken a good look at what materials he's provided you.
Yeah, more, yeah. The more information we have, we can streamline that process.
We can think of anything and during the interim, we will forward it to you.
Yeah, any questions, concerns, we want to be ready. So we're, so we can prepare.
Okay. It's September eleven.
Last line.
Okay.
So bring, bring whoever on your team is going to.
Yeah, so.
This morning, we'll make sure who's ever, is to be on, you're on our side.
Appreciate it. So thank you what you've been providing up to date, the materials you provided. We're, we're heading in the right direction with this one. We appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is an application by Twin Times Housing. This is on this evening for a recommendation to be made to the town board concerning a planned unit development commonly referred to as FUT. This is property located at fifty-four forty North Verdick Street. They have all in one tax map number zero eight six dash zero two dash zero six point one. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, thank you.
Can you remind me who you are?
Yes, my name's Brian Bouchard. I'm with CHA Consulting, project engineer, working on behalf of the developer. Also on the line is Brody Smith with Von Shonup and King are representing the applicant. And Charlie Brewer was the applicant and developer of the project this year. So just, I said, can you let Brody speak? Perfect.
Yes, we can, we can let Brody speak.
Permission granted, right? So just to kind of recap, sort of the last six or eight months or so. You're, you should be familiar with the property, right? It's located on the east side of North Verdick Street. It's directly opposite of the Northeast Medical Center and the Town Center Retirement Community. So it's a vacant parcel, former quarry, kind of interesting in that it has these pond features on it. And you'll recall that when we were last before the boards, we were discussing how the development team is interested in creating a mixed-use residential community with a variety of apartment styles, clubhouse, amenities, walkability, and sidewalk connectivity to the town center and commercial areas. At that time, we were talking about the existing zoning of the parcel, which is R five. And we began to show how this particular property, because it's so unique essentially, is also very difficult to develop within a, a rigid framework of a, of a R five district. Um, we were looking at like the developable area, which is a calculation to, to figure out how much of the land could be developed within the R five districts. And obviously, a lot of this land is encumbered by that water surface. Um, what the project's vision was, was a more denser development on a smaller footprint. So taking things like surface parking lots and putting them into a parking garage, but making the buildings color. Uh, and really, what this led to was us taking a step back and talking about the process that is recreated for a planned unit development. And this is what the town board took upon themselves to look at various areas and districts within the town where planned unit developments would be able to be developed with a very strict guideline that doesn't necessarily follow the framework of the existing zoning code. So these types of projects would propose a district plan and include things that match within the comprehensive plan such as, you know, your smart growth, which is mix of land uses on a single parcel, and then the compact design and walkability and some of the other features. Um, and, and also in these areas lining up with the future land use plan that's in your comprehensive code. Um, so since that time and over the summer, the town board did look at very specific places within the town and formally adopted a local law that does allow for these certain areas to propose what's considered a planned unit development. So our project is now formally applied in the first step of this process for the planned unit development's district plan. Um, so we attended the last town board meeting and presented the district plan to them. Uh, they gave us some very positive feedback and part of their diligence to sending this project and the district plan to you all as a planning board for recommendation and then also the county for the GML twenty thirty-nine review. This is not a very site-specific site plan review like you would do for a site plan application. That would be the next step. This is simply the district plan that needs to be reviewed and approved that basically outlines the regulations for which this development could be constructed. So this is broadly similar to your zoning code, but for a specific piece of property that this is, it'd be the land uses, where those land uses take place on the site, any certain bulk regulations in terms of the lot sizes and parking, and also some of the things that do capture within the comprehensive plan like workforce housing and sustainability goals for the project. So what you have included in your submission is the written language of that district plan, which again goes through that list of uses and the things that could be developed and also the goals for the development. And part of the district plan is to create a district plan map that creates the land use areas for which the project can be developed. So as you look at the map, I don't know if you want to put it up on the screen, but you should each all have a copy of it.
Yeah, if you want me to release that again.
Yeah, just so you get it to open up and have people on nine to look at it too. And, um, so as part of the district plan, we created the map and the map outlines the land use areas. So to describe the property generally, you can see along. Um, this is presenting. Okay, it's presented now.
Did you not get it?
Here we go. So you all have it kind of open on your desk and we'll show it on the screen here in a second. Um, we'll talk about sort of the layout here in that what we would be proposing is off of North Verdick Street, directly opposite of that Northeast Medical Center driveway, we'd be proposing a new town right-of-way and town roadway that would enter into the development. And kind of go between that north pond and the second pond to the back of the site where we have the developable area. One thing that we did include here is a continuation of that town right-of-way to the back of the property all the way around the pond. We only control the area that you can see in the red line. We do know that the existing property owner has control of the property to the south. And what we've done is shown a temporary easement that would extend that town right-of-way for things like fire trucks and emergency vehicles for the interim. Uh, while that property owner, you know, potentially proposes some type of project and that roadway could eventually continue back out to North Verdick Street. As you come into the development, the development areas include the mixed-use area. So this mixed-use area would be possible for office-type uses, restaurants, and some of the other usance that are listed in the, um, the district plan with sort of a similar theme as the town center where you would have things like commercial or retailer office on the first floor and then the upper floors would be residential units for that mixed-use component closer to North Verdick Street. As you come in through the development toward the rear, um, sort of, if you could picture both sides of this road, there's a small area that's up against the pond that we envision smaller apartments, like smaller four, six, or eight-unit townhome-style apartments, still rentals, but something that had a garage and a driveway and then the backyards could base the pond. And then there's a very large area in the northeast corner, which is really the biggest developable area on site that we would have larger apartment buildings where we could, we could provide a podium construction with internal parking, parking garage type setting with the upper floors being residential units. You can also see there's almost a little island that juts out to the rear of the site that's also a developable area that's not part of the pond. to the rear of the site, that's also a developable area that's not part of the pond currently. Uh, and we picture this supporting again some type of smaller, uh, multi-story apartment building in the back that faces the pond. Right in the center of the project, kind of right opposite of the larger area, we would envision that being the clubhouse, kind of central to this development, and that clubhouse that things like amenities, um, fitness areas, and then, um, amenity space outside that would actually, uh, touch and engage that pond as well. Um, the remainder of the parcel that you see in green, although it is green, but a lot of it is the pond, so creating this water feature where there could be walking trails around the pond. And then some of the other areas that kind of come around the, the development and having that walking trail connectivity around the, um, around the apartments as well. So together with the district plan language and this district plan map, um, really forms the basis of what we're proposing for zoning regulations within the district. And as you mentioned at your start, what we're looking for is comments and a recommendation back to the town board, um, to have them consider this district plan for their approval. And obviously, this is understanding that once this step in the process is completed, we would then begin the site planning process where we would talk about, uh, building materials, grading, drainage, utilities, and all the things that you're used to within uh, a typical site plan review. At that point, you would have our zoning, and then we would come back to you for, um, the site plan review. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions that might happen.
What discussions have you had so far with the landowners to the south where this roadway is proposed to go?
So that seller, or the landlord to the south, is the seller of the property that we have under contract. So we do not own this property, the property is under contract, and the seller is the one that owns both of these pieces currently, so it's very much, um, an open dialogue in terms of where we can provide a temporary road easement, at the same time that he's trying to, uh, market that property for more of a commercial-type use, as we've heard in the past from his own.
So there's no, there's no definite agreement at this point, if they're that old, like, uh, what you're saying.
Preferably negotiating the easement.
Yeah, the, the actual alignment of that easement is in negotiation, and we would be able to provide that as part of it.
And what about with the sewer company? Because you'd be going over a sewer line that's there, what discussions have you had with them?
Yeah, so building a road over the county sewer, the county sewer is within an easement, so they do have rights to maintain access and things like that. Obviously, we wouldn't, because that is a county trunk sewer, the majority of that impacts his, um, property in terms of building placement. You obviously can't be moving this type of sewer or placing buildings over top of it, but certainly, the ability to traverse it with either a town roadway or a private roadway, um, you just would have to avoid your utilities and your buildings and placing it there.
Really, no, let me ask a question again. Every easement that I've had with underground utilities, there are understandings that you can't raise or lower the level of the grade over that easement. And I'm wondering what discussions that you've had and what approvals have you gotten from the sewer company?
Um, so we don't have any approvals from the sewer company, right? Again, that is a very valid question and comment that would have to be detailed in order to physically create that easement. And as Charlie said, the easement location is being negotiated, and I don't think we've even thought about what the grading of that roadway would look like as sort of a next step, right? Um, again, this is zoning regulations for development, but a lot of those detailed questions would certainly need to be um, approved by the sewer authority for any type of, um, final site plan would be.
Now, or, do you anticipate the residential areas, the commercial areas changing? In other words, you, you, we've got a map that says this is going to be residential, this is going to be commercial, do you anticipate those things changing?
No, and there's a few reasons for that. Um, what contain, you know, the, the layout within the residential area, like where the driveway is versus landscaping and the shape of the building and the size of the building is certainly subject to change, but there is not, not a lot that could be done to change these land use areas. Um, the pond, obviously restricts a very large portion of it. There's areas around the pond from the old quarry that are very steep, that aren't really, um, developable in terms of like expanding the residential areas, that's why we created them. And then with the mixed-use area, keeping that up front, um, provides a way for people to get in and out of those, you know, office or retail-type uses without necessarily traversing the larger retail components in the backs. We're very comfortable with those land use areas, and this will be a part of, um, the district plan. And if, if needed to be amended in terms of those use areas, you would have to amend the district plan as well.
I know the fire department in Fayetteville says if you don't have a road going all the way through, it's a dead deal. So I guess that means, I'm not sure where we're going with this, to be honest. There's a lot of questions I have about the PUD and how we put it together and so on, but it starts, I think, with that great road. Existing, and if it doesn't exist, it's a dead. So I, or as I'm looking for some guidance, I, I, you know.
Our recommendation to the contingent of pond, of achieving that, that that would be.
It can be. Ultimately, what the town board is going to, is looking for a recommendation. They're going to decide if this should be given a, a PUD designation. If they say yes, it's going to come back here. For, for the district plan.
But, but as we've discussed, there's, there's no setbacks, there's no buffers, there's no building separation, there's no, anything like that in the PUD that we've got.
It all comes from this story.
Do we have the ability to do that at site plan review?
Well, it's, it's, it's developing the district plan, so site plan review slash district plan.
What I'm saying.
Everything's done negotiation and backflow. Everything's up to us.
Okay, so if, if we give back a positive recommendation, we do have the ability later on to say, you need to have a fifty-foot separation between buildings, or whatever the case might be, because they're six-story buildings.
Yes.
Okay.
And the town board has the ability to say, we just agree with that, but if they're supposed to, you know, because ultimately, they're the ones who establish the district plan.
Because we have our code, we have buffer areas from standing water, that's not in the PUD at this point in time. So when we do the site plan review later on, we can say, by the way, our code under one twenty-seven nineteen says you need to have twenty-five-foot buffers from the pond.
The, the answer to that is, it's not what the code says, it, it's what the planning board says within the reasonable discretion of, well, why isn't that there in the first place? Like, there's a reason why it's there. So if all of a sudden, this board, like, one foot is plenty, or four usually is twenty-five feet, so it's not, nothing is set in stone.
Okay, I think this, this is a unique parcel that needs to be developed under certain conditions that doesn't cause a problem.
Discuss.
That doesn't cause a problem like we had in other areas of the town. And I just want to make sure we have the flexibility at a later date.
That's what it is.
To step forward, okay.
It's extremely flexible.
Okay, okay.
And then, you know, if there's something that's controversial, um, it's, it's up to this board to explain to the town board, you know, that we say it's five feet, they think, they want twenty-five feet. Ultimately, town board's going to decide, but town board should be listening to the planning board, because the planning expertise about how to put together these.
Okay, I get it, I, I got it, I understand now.
I'm sorry, Brody's not speaking, I, I don't mean to interrupt, if, if it's all right, I might just chime in on that subject if this is the appropriate time.
Go ahead.
So I, I think those are great questions, and I think you really hit the nail on the head. I mean, this is, I mean, if you look at the map on the screen, if you, if you look at the district plan, the district plan was really, um, written to, to match the format and the sort of things that are covered in your zoning code. If you, if you slipped it into the zoning code, it'd look like a lot of your other district regulations for zoning. The district map's supposed to look like a zoning map. Th- this first step, um, is a zoning exercise, right? Before you can design a site plan, you need zoning that, that will, um, allow you to do that. So a- all the things that you're raising are, are absolutely appropriate site plan considerations, that you'll have full ability to, you know, condition, regulate, go through your normal process, um, like any other site plan application. But before we can, you know, get into the deeper design, we need zoning. And so that's what we're asking for, this would be the same thing as if somebody proposed a zone change, and the town board began a zone change process, and they referred it to the planning board to, you know, to chime in on the use and the bulk requirements, that sort of thing. Um, that's what we're doing here, and that's the way the PUD is intended to work.
And I, I appreciate that. My concern is that without language in the PUD, which it does not have at this point, and I, and we as a board say, hey, we need a twenty-five-foot setback wherever, you're not going to say to us, no, it's not the PUD, we don't need to do that.
Right, and I think.
That's my concern.
Right, and, and I think, uh, the way that this is created is, as you said, it's an incredibly unique parcel. So in a, in a way, it empowers you more than just saying, well, in commercial district, it requires a ten-foot setback. They have a ten-foot setback, we can't, you know, tell them to move the building, even though we'd really like the building to be somewhere else. This really does, it gives you that flexibility to almost regulate even further how that development will take place under site plan review.
A- and then what I would add to that too is your site plan criteria, like you were mentioning fire safety. You absolutely have the ability to, um, condition site plan approvals based on, you know, issues like access, issues like fire safety. So, you know, that, that conversation, um, number one, you know, could absolutely happen. I think the rea- number two, I think the reason that you don't see a lot of bulk requirements in here is the town board really has a strong desire for some density on this project. So they didn't want to, they didn't want to set sort of arbitrary large setbacks in locations where it may not be necessary, because I think they're hoping for some housing density. They view this as an optimum site to build apartments that won't damage existing single-family residential and add much-needed, um, housing to the housing stock, right? Um, so, you know, the, the last thing I'll say, and I don't want to dominate too much of your time here, I know you have a long agenda, but the, y- you've seen some of our concept plans before, when we came to the board before, and they all, you know, satisfied, I think, the things that you were talking about. It, it's not appropriate in a zoning map like this to put building footprints or things like that, but I, I think you've already seen, you know, examples of what we have in mind, and they comply with what you're talking about.
Okay, I just, I mean, my concern is that we don't get into an argument that we want a twenty-five, thirty-foot, fifty-foot buffer from one of the ponds where you put a building. And it doesn't say anything in the PUD about that. I don't want to get into an argument when we do site plan review. That's simply what I'm saying.
And taken as a comment or recommendation, I'm sure that can be written in words where the planning board, you know, is recommending that you maintain control throughout the site plan process to make appropriate modifications to the layout when, you know, when the project's like, I'm close to you.
So I'll turn to my attorney and say exactly what that.
Well, I'm not sure that's necessary.
Yeah, well, because it's already inherent, really, but, yeah.
Say that.
Yeah, and I don't think, the only one I was thinking is maybe the clubhouse, um, but no- nothing else is even contemplated to be that close to the pond, I don't think. Yeah.
Okay. Brian, two questions. Looking at the, uh, residential property in a northeast quadrant, it's my understanding that several of structures may be six stories. How high is the top of those?
So again, the building has not been designed, but I could say ten to ten, ten foot, floor-to-floor height, plate, well, eight, twelve foot, so sixty-eight to seventy feet. When you look at the road that comes in, there is a slope that falls toward the north. And in some of the conceptual planning that we've done, the vision of that six-story building would be that from the street as you pull in, the first floor is residential. And then when you go around the building to the rear, you would go down a hill, and there would be the service parking lot and parking garage entrance that would almost appear as a basement level. So there's a lot of topography that we can work with in providing bigger buildings, to providing those parking, parking garages, and still make it look and feel like a residential project, but we've thought a little bit about that, so sixty to seventy feet, probably.
So the second question dealing with that is, how does that compare if you go directly due west to Verdick Street? How would, how would the top of that building compare to where Verdick Street's currently sitting?
It's funny you say that, because when we initially were looking at this project under the R five zoning district, one of the reasons why this property really can't be developed under R five is because of the height restriction within R five, right? And what we had talked about is, well, this is significantly setback off the street, and it's almost, I think it was thirty feet lower in elevation than North Verdick Street, and we did a cross-sectional diagram of what that building would look like from the great elevation to its roof compared to North Verdick Street, compared to even the, uh, Town Center Retirement Community, which, as you know, is almost up on a hill, even though it's, I think, three stories or two and a half stories or something. That building would be taller than these six-story buildings that are sitting so far off the road, um, in the rear of the property, when you were to draw a straight line.
Yeah. Is anyone else on board with questions?
Go ahead, Ari.
Charlie.
Yes.
Ultimately, the market determines how much you can charge for your purchase.
Correct.
Um, one of the things the town board wants is workforce accommodations. Where does the money come from to make up the difference between what it costs and what you can get in terms of revenue? Where does that money come from? The town doesn't have it.
Correct, yeah, no, so it'll be built into the project, the performance.
Okay.
No, we're not, we're not asking for some, we're not asking for a associate program or a local program, so.
Does the, the last line in the PUD, um, proposal is to electrify all the appliances, is that a problem?
No, no, we have, um, the, except for maybe a first picture, uh, because the whole ground is completely under.
Okay.
You know, to make, to make stupid.
I have a comment. I, I'm, I like that you guys came back with some mixed use. I know we had mentioned that before, and I think it'd be beneficial if, you know, I'm just, I know the mixed uses, uh, places that the residents benefit from up right there, um, so thank you for incorporating that.
Or anyone else?
Joe, I, I, I mean, I, I went through the district plan, and I have some comments. I'm not sure, are we ready to make a recommendation one way or another? Or are we?
It depends on what all of our comments, correct, what all of our feelings say.
Okay, should I walk through this? I think it would be appropriate, okay. Um, and this really isn't specific to your comments, it's just generalities. Uh, nowhere in here does it talk about how many acres the entire plan is. There should be something, in my opinion, there should be something in the first paragraph that said, this twin tons district plan is twenty-four point five, thirty-five acres, whatever it is. It's not in there. The commercial business in, uh, B one J should be, and that would see so many acres. I, I have no idea what those acreage, what that acreage should be, what it should be stipulated in there. I don't.
Which, where?
That was, uh, B one J.
E one.
Commercial business, which is a profounded use in this plan. I, I don't think we want this entirely commercial, so I think we should, somewhere, there's like, limited to so many acres, whatever it is.
I think it's in that district, in the, like, with zoning app, right?
Well, that.
The next you, the rest of residential.
That may not be the final, like, I don't know what the final plan is.
It's a sample.
The district plan math is part of this appendix day of the district plan.
See, that's an exhibit.
So it is.
You said that will be changed.
The.
The usage.
Yeah, well, then, then you shouldn't have a, the people developing shouldn't have a problem to say it will be no more than five acres, whatever, whatever the acreage is.
It can only be, commercial business can only be put in this mixed-use area.
Right, and if we worked upon by that mixed-use area, we could figure out what the acreage is.
Well, yeah, my, my guess. Well, yeah, my, my guess. I, I've been involved in real estate development for a lot of years. My guess is that some of these boundaries may be adjusted as you guys get into it. Start putting buildings on and, and I understand that. So we should have, in my opinion. Uh, and that's what see so many commercial acres or commercial square feet or. However, and again, I'm just, I'm one vote, I'm just one person on this board speaking what I think.
Well, do you, Rich, um, do you mean commercial business versus retail sales or restaurants? Or do you mean?
Commercial.
So what, what, one thing that's important to understand is the map can't, we can't change the map and actually neither. Neither can you, you know, latterly. The map is going to be part of the town zoning map. So those boundaries are only available to be amended through town board action. But that being said, it's not a problem for us to calculate what the acreage for the mixed use. Area is and include it in the district plan. But that, that map, and I think the boundaries there are not so easily manipulated by us as I, I, I think you might think. That would require town board action to change those lines.
Okay, all right. If that's the case, that's fine, that's fine. Another comment I have, I don't understand in number two. Lot area point five acres, non-residential slash two acres for residential.
So what this was intended to do is take our current parcel that we have under contract, fifty plus or minus acres. We will have a new town roadway that's going to bisect this property as it exists today. What this does is give flexibility for that mixed use area to potentially subdivide a lot specific to an office. Or something else happening here for that lot, right? Um, this is mimicking what you would find in the lot size and lot area requirements of your commercial district. Or your residential district or what have you. So it's needed to be in here. Um, but it was to give flexibility to subdividing a specific lot or the non-residential use. And then likewise, the residential use is two acre minimum, so that it kind of.
So you can finance this.
Yeah, and then you don't end up with uh, like, single-family detached townhomes percent, essentially, right? It's an apartment project. So it limits the size of, but you can have two acres for the first phase of the project being developed as one apartment building. Finance it and then subdivide uh, the, the second base of the project, essentially, yes.
And, and the reason they're different is specifically the town board wanted to see some flexibility where there could be some mixed use. It could be a restaurant. It could be a shop. Maybe that sort of thing, but nobody wants there to be single-family homes. So we have different lot size minimums. To express that policy preference uh, expressed by the board.
Okay, all right. Um, the comment, I think the parking spaces are light. Uh, if you look at our, our five code. We would require a lot more parking. I just throw that out. I mean, the rest of the board, they can have their own opinion. But that's just my opinion. I think the parking is light now. It also says off-street. I'm assuming if you put parking in the basement. That is considered off-street, therefore that's part of the calculation.
Correct.
I'm just saying, I'm, I'm not sure you're gonna have enough parking spaces. You've got a phasing plan and you say that it's going to be four phases. That roadway absolutely has to be in the first phase.
It would have to by code.
Okay. Uh, I know, I know they took out the, the workforce housing. So I guess I'll save my comments on that for another day.
But the workforce housing is only going to be five percent. We're talking about four units out of the whole development. Somewhere in that ballpark?
No.
You know, it'd be, it'd be forty units.
So, okay, yeah, I know this is more for town. I mean, I, I read through it. And we're not really involved in this something for the town board to deal with. Uh, but you know, it talks about thirty percent of the income. Who, who determines that? Who, who complies with that? What's the penalty if they don't comply with it? There's no language in here that discusses any of that. It's not, I guess, my business.
But it's a good point that you brought it up because the town board brought it up too. So there was some markups coming from the town board's attorney to. Add to some of that language. One of the town board members was very descriptive and must work in the industry. So there was some questions about. Clarifying the calculation to make sure that it's readable by tenants so that they understand it, right?
Yeah.
Um, and beyond that, like you said, enforcement checks on it and how we report to the town to make sure that it applies. And a lot of those different things were talked about. So I think Tim has some red lines that he was.
I mean, it, it's, it's a very fluid, you know, calculation because it changes every day when I'm doing it.
So I, I, to that a, a little bit, I mean, the way that it's structured is it very closely. Tracks the HUD federal regulations, we, instead of reinventing the wheel. You know, it, it tracks that and the, the idea behind it, that sort of base number, it's not. It, it doesn't change every day. It's not whatever we want it to be. Uh, HUD sets by metropolitan area. So by MSAs, they set the, the uh, mean household income. So the beginning of that calculation is set by the federal government annually. So when it says. You know, eighty percent of the average median income, um, or median income, I should say. That, that number, the beginning point is set by the federal government. The only reason we don't have. Dollar amounts in here is the federal government varies those um. Uh, statistics a bit year, year by year, based on data that they've gathered. So we, we don't choose, we don't choose it. The federal government chooses it. Those percentages will, will then be applied. To those HUD statistic, statistics that are uh, released annually.
Okay, no, I appreciate that because you're, it is the Syracuse S M S A. So.
Correct.
Thank you. And then I, I discussed earlier setbacks. Building separation buffers and we have, I think, the flexibility that he was at in a later date. So those are my comments.
I have one more comment because of what Rich said. And now we're meeting these together. Um, in letter K. So we were saying how the mixed use and the non-residential and the residential are designated on the map. Of it in letter K, it does say the non-residential units may be located anywhere in the P U D district. So that would seem inaccurate based on what we were talking about in the map.
You are correct. We should clarify that, yes.
And how would you clarify it?
It would have to be not in, anywhere in the P U D district. It'd be anywhere in the mixed use. On the mixed use area of the P U D district.
I, I've got a couple of questions slash comments. You're ready?
While you're waiting.
All right, thanks. Um, I picked up on that too. The same thing that um, was just talked about with the um. The K mixed use one, so that would be great to clarify that. Also on, on the first page, B. Two bulk requirements. It might be helpful to put minimum lot area on there under two A. It says it on the plan. And then I kind of, um, I'm trying to wrap my head around that. You know, when you first walked us through the plan. Um, you talked about how the area, the thin strip of residential area. Um, adjacent to the roadway, you know, when you first come in at the light. I'm guessing that's the, the area that you were talking about having, um, you know, some town home type homes and. I'm a little bit concerned about how those are going to fit in there. We have talked about and looked at some of the previous plans and it was kind of tight. With, you know, even considering having um. Whether we would entertain backing out into the road um, from the driveways if the parking spots in front of those townhomes were right there. Um, you know, with how busy that that could get. Um, and so that kind of, I'm confused with the two acre minimum for residential, how you would. Break that up if those were two acre parcels along in that area, right where your arrow is. How would you do that?
They. I don't know if I understand the question. So the, the purpose of the residential project's minimum is so that there's not very small. Single-family lots essentially, right? So two acre minimum requires like a phase of the project. So when you were to look at. You know, these townhome style apartments, if they're small buildings, they would all be building one phase on one continuous lot. They wouldn't be subdivided as individual buildings. Or individual units, right? Does that answer the question?
That definitely answers it, yes. Okay, so then, um, and then I'm just kind of curious, one of the, um, on the plan. The map, the plan map, when you broke this apart, was this the. The differentiation between the mixed use area and the residential area? Do you kind of already have a concept plan in mind that you're gonna be working towards and you kind of pulled this from that? Or was like, how did that line get drawn? Was it off of um, square footages of air or acreage, you know, that kind of thing? It'd be great to see the approximate acreage. Um, for the different uses put on here, even though, you know, I understand it might change a little bit. Um, you know, having it as part of the, the file, I mean, to, to understand and say, okay, well, we've got, you know. Ten acres or eight acres that we're looking at going for mixed use and then however many for residential, that kind of thing. Um, and then with the recreation area, it might be nice to see a breakout of the water. Um, area.
Yeah, uh, I mean, we have the aerial underneath it to kind of help distinguish where the water is. Our, is that water falls within the idea of recreating, whether you're walking a trail around it or have some type of uh. Like a little dock or pet of hordes or whatever might be out there. So it, we tried to still capture it under sort of three generalized use areas. But showing it as water, I guess, is something that, that we could do as well. Um, the mixed use area was purposeful in that it is at the entry to the project so that. Um, customers of some potential office or restaurant or retail space don't have to. Fully navigate the larger residential block and parking areas that would be established for the residential. So that area up front would be um, smaller scale. Building or buildings with ground floor, commercial, office, retail use with upper floor residential. And it was purposeful in that we know where the roadway has to go because of creating a topography. And we captured a large enough area to at least provide for um, this word footage that stated in the district plan for parking space.
Okay, so it was the parking space. I just was curious why the line was, the line between the mixed use and the residential ended up where it was if there was. A concept plan that you guys already had in mind that you were working from. I absolutely agree. It should be where it is.
Yes, that is very much the case. So like that first building or two buildings would be more mixed use and then you would transition into. What would be the sort of the more apartment feeling uh, residential units that would be behind that line? So it was purposeful, although it wasn't, it was sketch plans, right? Napkin sketches. So there's a lot of things like topography and the road right away. Drainage and landscaping and all the other things that I guess aren't appropriate to be showing an actual layout on the plan. But it was part of the vision and why we drew that line in there.
It's a tricky site, you know, it's expensive really fast. On the utilities, um, was there gonna, is there any language that might be included in here about the lighting? Pedestrian and vehicular lighting, um, water and sewers mentioned. I was just. Um, interested to see if there might be a spot in this um, district plan to plug in some. Um, expectations about the lighting. Also similar, but not probably quite as important, but um. Wayfinding mechanisms within the site. Is this development um, going to be something that is. Intended to be designed to blend into the existing um. Design vocabulary of the town or would it be something that is more um, under a. Not a theme might not be the right word, but um, you know, would there be. You know, signage and designated design styles for the different things. Would it be having a name, you know, and how far would that go? Because um, the wayfinding and the signage um. That could impact what, how this district plan is written.
So the town's uh, sign laws all apply. We didn't create any set-asides or any exemptions. From the town, the town sign regulatory framework.
Okay, I saw that note here. What about the lighting?
I mean, the, the, there, there's nothing is, is part of the district plan that exempts any other. You know, lighting concerns. So as part of your site plan review, you, you, I, I know that you got, you can, you consider sort of dark sky. You know, um, type considerations. So during the site plan process, it'd be subject to all that. There's nothing explicit in here that like. Dictates as part of the zoning district that certain types of lights can or can't be used, but none of the town's. Process, you know, as part of site plan and controlling, you know, a fugitive light would be exempted by the P U D.
Certainly similar conversation.
They're gonna leave before, so. So, thank you for your patience with some of my questions because this is the first time that I. I've designed stuff but within one, but I've never seen the creation of one. So I'm not sure how much detail goes into it. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that makes perfect sense. It's a brand new law. So, uh, yeah, I mean, everybody, you know, this is, this is a new law for mainly. Mainly, all these questions make perfect sense.
If, if I could ask a couple of questions. We have patients, certainly that. Commercial businesses is very broad. This is uh, B one J. And it's, we have commercial A, commercial B, we have industrial, we have. So can we define that better to what exactly the commercial businesses? That will be in that area are going to be?
Um, I'm sure we can.
It's, it's a strange, you know, I also picked up on that because we don't specifically define commercial. Business in that definition of zoning code, but we do refer to it in the various sections like.
Different sections have different commercial uses.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
Um.
Yes, so what, what, what we did is we went through all your zoning districts and found zoning designations, you know, that sort of exist within. Within the code and then through multiple meetings talked about it with. You know, the town attorney and the town board as to what, what of those uses, you know, we took a survey of the different uses listed in the other zoning districts. They thought would be appropriate for that one. And you're right, uh, you know, commercial. That commercial designation is broad, but it, we're, we're trying to live within the vernacular of the current. Code, um, instead of creating something new or different for P U D. You know, we're, we're trying to use the terms that you use elsewhere in the code. And so I think there was a desire. To allow those types of businesses in this, in this area. If there is, if there is a. A desire from the planning board to restrict certain things. We'd be very interested to know and we could include that in comments to the town board. The, the idea is the town board really wanted to see this not just be an apartment development. I think the town board really wanted to see um, walking trails, you know, linking up to. Uh, eventually linking up to the village, linking up to the senior center. People, I think their vision is people using this. Um, year round, you know, as a walkable community, there being things like, you know, a restaurant or coffee shop, things like that that they could use. And so those zoning designations are contemplated to create that. That, that, that community, I guess. And, you know, if there's things that are concerning that you think are inconsistent with that vision. We'd be happy to bring those back to the town board and modify the district plan to specifically prohibit certain things. Um, if, if that's what you're feeling.
Okay, there's, we have always been very careful with the difference between commercial A and commercial B. And we've tried to, you know, control where we put that or recommend because we're not the town board that approves it. But where we recommend that type of use. So, you know, right now, we can have adult uses in commercial business without it being defined. And then the, the other question I have, accessory structures and uses incidental to multiple family dwellings, what is that?
So this would be, for instance, having covered parking as an accessory structure, so little out garages, right? On the opposite side of a drive aisle.
Okay.
There's other things that go along with that, like a small maintenance building for lawnmower and, and other things that put the outback as an accessory structure. Beyond that, the biggest one would be something like the clubhouse, which is not a residential building or apartments, but it's an accessory, as an amenity space with a fitness center, leasing office, community room, etc. So, um, incidental to the multi-family is why we try to frame it that way so that it's something that has to specifically do with the residential use.
Okay.
Have you done anything like this before?
Actually, all the time. This is a very common practice in a lot of different towns and municipalities, but the town of Manly has did not have a zoning mechanism to allow for planned unit development. So that's why it's new to you, uh, but there are numerous other planning developments all the way across.
Where would be the closest one that you've worked at?
Uh, currently, right now, there's many in the town of Clay and town of Cicero, all of which, um, kind of revolve around the same idea of providing, uh, a community-like setting within a denser style development than has been expected of the towns and villages in the past, where we've created a lot of single-family residential subdivisions out into the towns, town of Clay and agricultural land. And sort of trying to bring that back for more dense development within like Route eleven. Um, in Cicero, for instance, where there's, there's land that's in and amongst the Walmart and the wagons that would have residential housing that you can either, as a, as a age restricted living, take a shuttle bus to and not have to go from, you know, the suburbs back into the city and those types of things. Um, Togo Bellagio is in the town of Clay, Room thirty-one. It's an approved P U D that we worked on probably twelve years ago and is sort of, um, maybe half-built in terms of the apartment, uh, complexes that are up there, built in Balden'sville. There's one right on the, the water that's two individual apartment buildings. It's on Lock Street. Of Boggs Island. So there's many of these examples in the surrounding towns and villages that really create, um, an individualized project within a zoning code, essentially.
Have you done any of this many apartments, this, this lot?
Yeah, some of them, um, more, you know, some of them, like Togo Bellagio, for instance, is a very large piece of property. Um, probably twice the size of this and it does not have a giant pond in the center that they have to work around. So there's a lot of similarities, I think, in that. That's, I believe, is somewhere around five hundred units, it could be up to a whole hundred units of, of apartments. Number thirty-one, it's called Togo Bellagio.
So I have another question, I want to see you guys, but also for the board, now that we're talking about this a little bit more, um, with the commercial usage. Wondering what we would think about narrowing that down a little bit from just commercial. I mean, they list like artisan baker and restaurants, but I'm wondering, thinking of, um, the regional shopping district zoning. Because we have it across the street, right? Or we've, we changed it to, um, and keeping with this is a residential area. And it's a residential across the way that the retirement community. It's just, there's a lot of stuff that could go in there under special permit, but, or maybe not, but it has similar uses, but.
In, in which district?
I was thinking, cause like one of the commercials is like light manufacturing and vehicle repair and all that. And I don't see that going in there, especially with people living above it, but. Everyone wanted, right? So I'm wondering, like the residential shopping or the regional shopping district has artisan maker daycare facilities, commercial business only, including wholesale, wholesale establishments provided they're fully located in an enclosed building, farmers market gathering places, including greenhouses, light manufacturing, places of entertainment, including our case billiards, hall during sports, recreation complexes and theaters. He's like, Jim wants to go in there with the residential.
Which, which one of this are? I mean, is there anything?
It also lists professional offices, service, restaurants, retail sales, like as far as like the small pharmacy grocery store, specialty shops.
See, this, this is why, what you're pointing out is why I think we need more time amongst ourselves to discuss this before making a recommendation to the town board. There's a lot of questions.
We should make a recommendation to tighten up. What, 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 we said something like, um, we just heard all of that.
Yeah, most of them are actually listed right off.
Listed, right. So. Say, um, commercial, commercial business as defined in our regional shopping, our, yeah, R S zone. I like that. Brody, you're muted.
Yeah, thank you. Jamie, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, hear what you said. I apologize. The commercial business.
Yeah, and they're, they're concerned about how, how broad that could be. And that, and what Valerie did is she just, uh, read from our regional shopping section of the code. If you want to try and pull that up, R S. You know, like basically anything that's allowed in that, our, our S would be considered an appropriate commercial business.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could add a parenthetical, commercial businesses permitted in the R S district. I have to talk to my client, but I just can't imagine that'd be an issue if that, if that gives the board some comfort. So the, the broad, the broadness of that list, you should understand the broadness of that list is driven by the town board, not by the applicant.
It sounds like the real concern is like auto. There's several things. Yeah.
I mean, you mentioned you're gonna have residences above it, so there wouldn't be a gas station.
No, like a dump tire or something either, right?
But if it were to change possession or anything like that, and if they were, if they see commercial and there isn't that point of residence above it.
We need more time on this. I wouldn't take this.
Well, 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 if, if there's discomfort there, I mean, we, I, again, we should talk about limiting that category altogether. I mean, um, again, that commercial business, we didn't create that. That's taken from your code. Um, and it's in other districts. If, if, I, I think the, the comment I'm hearing is the board's uncomfortable with commercial business being a potential use category there. And I'm not sure that, that's really an issue for the applicant, honestly. If that's your feeling.
I think we're thinking of it in zoning terms. And so we're thinking commercial A, commercial B, and what's in there.
So I, I agree with what you're saying, but it's not, it's not a zoning, it's, it's not a zoning district. It's a term, so in each zoning district, there's lists of uses in your zoning code. And one of the uses that's listed is commercial. Uh, it's not referring to a district. It's not referring to a zoning district. It's, it's a term that shows up in, in your code. So if that term, if you're uncomfortable with that sort of broad category of businesses from a, it's, it's not a zoning district issue, it's a definitional issue, then we could, we could change that. Yeah.
If take out commercial business, but just call it uses as defined in the R S. So just because it's, I think everyone agrees, those, that's a good list of uses.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So instead of business, the last thing will be uses as defined in R S.
Yeah, i- if it would bring comfort to the, to this board, I mean, I'll take it to my client and say, and, and replace that. Replace that, you know, commercial business designation to say all, all other uses permitted in the R S zone. If that, if that brings you comfort. Does that, does that give this board comfort?
I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it seems to me that we, we've been talking about this for quite a while now. And, and if I understand correctly, we've got four particular areas that we're looking for modifications on. One is in paragraph K, simply where it would indicate that non-residential units may be located only in the mixed unit would be the appropriate verbiage.
Correct.
And so that's issue number one. Number two, that this should be conditioned upon the road extension to be completed continuing to Verdict Street.
Great.
Otherwise, I'll.
I, I agree with the first one, but the second one just doesn't feel like a zoning, you know, sorry to push back on this one, but that doesn't feel like a zoning consideration.
It's a New York State Building requirement.
Yeah, that's a requirement, it's a site plan consideration. But the, the idea that like I won't zone a part of the, a part of the town residential or commercial or industrial until a road is built, I mean, it, I, I've never seen anything like it. Yeah.
I, I don't have it in front of me, but that is one of the, the requirements for the town board to put a P U D together, and that is fire protection. And unfortunately, I, I thought I printed it, I didn't. So that is something that should be required.
Well.
Turnaround within this property without having to go into the legal, legalities of coordinating it offsite?
Fire department said no turnarounds. It's gotta be a continuous road to entrances.
Yeah, door provided, the gravel road is today. People, the property owners do something, this, this is to allow for the test. Um, well, it's not, it's necessary in order for us to do what we're all talking about. Provide this gravel road, it clearly is just per fire embrace.
Right, I, I think what we're saying is that's gotta be part of, we, we are saying that. It's gotta be done. We're, we're saying that that really needs to be part of the deal. Yeah.
I, I can't, I can't open up, I can't get a C V O, technically, building code wise, without this gravel pad through the southern.
They've already agreed with.
So why, why are we disputing it?
So because it's not a, it's not a zone. I mean, we can't, until we get the zoning, we can't, we can't do what you're asking us to do, right?
Yeah, you say that, we're not making it a condition precedent. We're making it a condition of eventuality that it needs to be put in. Right. Notice you don't have to put it in immediately, but you need to have an understanding that it's going to be put in.
It's a requirement of building.
So.
No, it's, it's a requirement of units. So if there's more than two hundred units, you need to.
Two points. Essentially, if one road gap closes, there is a point where you can use all the taxes. So we do understand that, yes. Okay, that's why I'm going on the.
Right, as, as long as it comes eventually. There the, uh, where we refer to commercial business, it would be delineated, commercial business as, uh, is defined in the regional shopping, so.
I believe it, it was, we're going to replace the words commercial business with.
With.
Uses as defined in the regional shopping zone.
And lastly, we, I talked about, uh, under bulk requirements, defining the minimum lot.
Yeah, stating minimal because it's just.
Now, my, my concern is that we take time to absorb more and to think more. I'm fearful that we're killing time, that the developer may get discouraged. And I, I think we've talked this all out. We, we discussed this at a planning meeting. Uh, I'm, I'm actually looking forward that we move forward and either tell the town board, yes or no, with these conditions that we support that we.
I'll take a motion for, at the end of motion.
Sure.
And then recognition to the town board with the four conditions that we set forth.
I'll say, we got a motion made by Valerie, sent by Erin. All in favor? Any opposed?
Very good. Thank you very much.
So as, as modified, both of those four issues.
Correct, I got it. Yep, Charlie or, uh, Brody and I will get that to the town board. As I said, they may have comments to it as well and forward to the process. So thank you.
Thank you ever, we appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for coming. Erin, did you want to make a motion?
Well, do we have any, uh, other business?
That's what I'm aware of.
Um, and I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, second, all in favor.
Seventeen fifty-six, sorry.